Welcome. I'd like to call to order the September 26, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mary, will you do the roll call, please?
I would love to. Hool?
Here.
Petway?
Here.
Maderas? Granlin?
Here.
Palmer? Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Thank you, Mary. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We are starting our meeting with our favorite way to do so, with a Highlander highlight. So if I could have Jenny Brad, Columbia Academy avid teacher, come up and Dwayne Burkis. You guys want to come up to the, right, to the microphone, right to this table, right here? And if we can have Kiran Karuthers come up, who is a Columbia Academy eighth grader. We've got some exciting recognition. And so I'll let Jenny and Dwayne, if you guys want to talk a little bit about our recognition tonight.
Last year in seventh grade Avid, we took the opportunity to use our essay writing unit to help our seventh graders apply for the Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship. And so Kiran was one of my seventh graders. It was a lot of work. They had to write three short answer essays, one long answer essay. They had to submit it for review. Once they made it to the next level, then their family got involved. Kiran was one of fifteen students that ended up going through the entire application process. And it was a lot of hard work. And he was one of the students that was always asking, does this sound good? Is this, is this, do you think this is right? Do you think we should submit it this way? It was just, it was a lot of work, and it was a lot of hard work, and he did such a wonderful job at it.
That's excellent. Great. Mr. Burkis, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm just here really to say how proud we are of Kiran. Kiran's been, since the day he got in Columbia Academy, he's been involved in so many different things. He basically was our yearbook person. We had one person doing yearbook, and we had a great yearbook. So Kiran's that kind of guy. And he does work hard. He's very conscientious. He works, and he's, and he's very bright. And you put those things together, and we know he's going to go a long way. So we're excited, proud of our Avid program and the work that Ms. Brad does with them and the opportunities, even at this age, that our kids are received through, through Avid. And there'll be many more, Kiran. So we'll look forward to more great things from you. Yeah.
I've got, thank you, Principal Burkis. And just to, to share about this scholarship, the Cook Young Scholars Program is a selective five-year pre-college scholarship for high-performing seventh-grade students with financial need. It provides comprehensive academic and college advising as well as financial support for school. And there's also Cook-sponsored summer programs, internships, and other learning enrichment opportunities. There were only forty-three students selected nationwide. And Kiran is one of those forty-three nationwide recipients. So congratulations. Your hard work has certainly paid off. And I can't wait for all the amazing things that you have in your future.
Thank you.
Yep, so let's do a round of applause. Congratulations. Kiran, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm true, oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm just truly grateful. It was a phenomenal, phenomenal opportunity because of Avid, with my amazing Avid teacher, Ms. Brad. And it was just a lot of, a lot of fun activities that we did this year. And it was really interesting to learn about writing and a lot of different important things to make these essays and apply and go through all the process. Thank you.
Yes, excellent. Thank you. Board members, does anybody want to, Julie?
I have a question. Do you think that the work on the yearbook helped you with your essays?
Definitely. I think when it comes to like compiling, compiling like the text and making everything like brief and concise while still illustrating a good point, I think it helped a lot. Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, Mary?
So I wanted to congratulate you again. So we're so excited and happy. Was there anything in the essay writing and the research and all the work that you learned that was really surprising?
Yeah, well, one of my essays, one of my short answer essays was based a lot of on what I did in robotics. And I helped like grow through robotics and learning how to do the code and collaborating with our teammates on the team. And even though we didn't do that well in robotics, so it was a really great learning opportunity, and I developed a lot of good skills.
Great. Michelle?
I'll just say congratulations. I mean, that is no easy feat. I mean, that's, that's a great, one out of what was it, forty-three? That's amazing. So congratulations. I know you worked hard for it.
Absolutely. Well, congratulations again. We, I'm sure, we'll hopefully see you back here at some other Highlander highlight with all the things you've got going on. So congratulations again, another round of applause. Thank you to Principal Burkis and to Ms. Brad for all of your hard work and your dedication in helping students have this opportunity. So thank you for that. Yep.
You do the photo?
Yep, come on up here.
I was in touch with the camera, so not a photographer, but we're going to do a rest.
All four of us?
Everyone are just, okay.
Did you, Ms. Brad, was she prepared?
Oh, before, before you go, are you in robotics again this year?
No, I'm playing basketball this year instead.
Okay.
Well-rounded.
Yep, I know.
Well, I will say you're more than welcome to stay for the meeting. Our school board meetings are riveting. However, you are also very free to, to depart as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Awesome.
One of my favorite parts of our meetings. All right, and with that, we will get back to business. We have our agenda approval adjustments and announcements. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? I have one question. Michelle, are you comfortable giving the Subcommittee on Community Engagement update?
So Jessica had the notes like actually written down, and I don't want to miss anything.
Okay, so if not, then because we're missing our two other committee members, we should amend the agenda to remove item, I gotta find it. Nine E, the School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement Update Description, update. So.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for tonight to remove the School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement Update.
So we have a motion to amend the agenda, removing the Subcommittee update. Is there a second?
So second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And then we have our original motion on the floor to approve the now amended agenda. I think that's how we do that. And of course, our problem attorney is not here, so we're going to say that's how we do that. And so any other discussion on the approval of the now amended agenda? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our announcements. On September 29th, at 6:00 PM is the homecoming football game and fireworks. Just a note, if anybody's listening, for community members, we do fireworks after the game on Friday, the 29th. So just kind of please be aware that you will hear fireworks that evening. Yes.
Related to that, can I say, so historically, a lot of people will remember that we used to do it every time we got a, a high, a touchdown, thank you. But we don't do that anymore, and it's only at the end. So just to clarify.
Yes, perfect. Thank you. October 3rd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM is the local 710 School Board Candidate Forum here in the community room. October 5th is a Flex Learning Day. That is an online learning day for students. October 6th, Friday, there is no school. October 10th, at 5:00 PM is the School Board Subcommittee on Policy here in the community room. October 10th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM is a School Board Regular Board Meeting here in the community room. October 17th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM is a School Board Work Session here in the community room. October 17th at 7:00 PM is the School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement here in the community room. October 19th and 20th, there is no school. October 24th, Tuesday before the board meeting, is the Ten Year Teacher Reception here in the Family Center. And October 24th at 7:00 PM is the regular School Board Meeting in the community room. There are a lot of announcements today. A lot going on coming up. Next, we have Correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Chair Mueller, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Next, we have our communication to the board. We have our citizen and employee representatives at this time. Any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and time is limited to three minutes per speaker. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board? Hearing none. We will move on. Next, we have our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes the Personnel Report from September 26, 2023, and the policies. These policies appeared at the Subcommittee meeting on September 12th, and they are legislative changes for the 2023-2024 school year and can be approved in one meeting. They include Policy 102 Athletic Program, 509 Enrollment, 513 Student Promotion, 602 E-Learning Negotiations, 603 Curriculum Development, 604 Structural Curriculum, 620 PSEO, 621 Literacy and the READ Act, and 624 Online Instructions. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Julie, and a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, we have our Acknowledgement of Contributions. This is a resolution, so I will read this. Need to make it bigger on my page. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $3,620. The monetary donations, a monetary, a donation of $50 to purchase Hat and Mittens for students needing them at North Park School for Innovation by John Doe from the Columbia Heights Lions Club. Value in Kind, a donation of Quick Talker Freestyle with Pro Loco To Go for Early Childhood Special Education by Jessica Chang Toralek valued at $3,495. And a donation of school supplies was made to Columbia Academy by Jane Doe for encore student needs estimated value of $75. The total fiscal year 2023-2024 monetary contributions to date is $7,786.63. Can I get a motion to, for this, to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Mary, and a second?
Okay.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Just like to thank our community members, very generous donations, and our anonymous donors listed here as well. Any other discussions?
I mean, just, it never gets old to say how grateful we are to the community and how much they invest in our students and our schools. It's just something that I think is really unique here, and so thank you, everybody, for all of the support.
Excellent. Thank you. Great. All right, since this is a resolution, it'll be a roll call vote. Mary, will you do the roll, please?
I will. Hool?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderas? Granlin?
Aye.
Palmer? Mueller?
Aye. And resolution passes. Thank you. Next, we have our Discussion Reports and Information Items, and we have our reports from members of the board. We will start with Mary.
Oh, yay. So a little bit less than last time, which is good. It's always nice to have those off weeks. Lots of phone calls with, you know, members of the community, students, staff, a lot of people curious about, as we sort of truck into school here and it's starting to get colder, you know, illness policies and things like that. I also was able to volunteer at Columbia Academy again, which is delightful. And I had several phone calls with members of the board and also Superintendent Stenbik. And I think, oh, and the, our work session last week.
Great. Thank you. Michelle?
I'm so same. I have attended the work session last week as well as the Subcommittee on Community Engagement met. And we'll get updated on that soon. And then I also had a planning meeting with the Families of Color over at North Park for our upcoming meeting in October. And I attended Pride on Saturday off Columbia Heights, which was a lot of fun. And that's pretty much it. It's kind of a short list this week, too, for me.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Julie?
I participated at the Patriot Picnic for the Republican Party on the 17th and explained about our, our levy and kind of an update for the school board. I also was at the Board Work Session. And then Superintendent Stenbik and I met on Friday to kind of go over just what we would be presenting to the city of Fridley. We met at the City Council last night and presented, well, Superintendent Stenbik did most of the presentation. I just introduced her. But we had a, we had really good positive response from the presentation and just, you know, giving the citizens of Fridley who are in our district more information, probably more clarity around what the levy is. So I thought that was great.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for doing that. I, last week, attended the chair meeting and the work session as well. I also attended Columbia Heights Pride and really had a great time at that event. Prior to this meeting, I volunteered at the Booster Hot Dog Wagon. That they were donating hot dogs and chips and pops to, for free to anybody as part of Homecoming Week. I have never seen that many people like come up to the hot dog wagon in my life. So that was a fantastic time, and it was a lot of students. So it was really a lot of fun interacting with the students tonight, so I'm glad I had the opportunity to do that. Had the chair meeting just prior to this. Also had conversations with community members and Member Granlin and several conversations with Superintendent Stenbik. So thank you. Next, we have our Superintendent's Report. And Correspondent Superintendent, do you have a, Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us?
I do, yes. Last week, the American Indian Education Program hosted a Welcome Back Picnic at Ramsdale Park, and it was really great to see the community, the committee members come together for the start of the school year and also welcome new families into the program. I have been participating on the planning team for the Second Annual Student School Board Representative Networking Session. We've been finalizing those plans, and information will be sent out soon. This year, Shakopee Public Schools will be hosting, and the idea is that it will be a traveling event each year. Executive Director Niambwe and I met with the head of the JAB Foundation, Jane and Archie Black Foundation, which is a philanthropic organization that supports literacy and reading efforts. So lots of good resources there. Principal Burkis and I presented information on the levy questions to the local Lions Club. And as mentioned, Member Hool and I presented to the Fridley City Council. And you definitely chimed in and added information. Information about the operating levy question and the Capital Projects Levy question can be found on our school district website. I met with, today I met with metro area stakeholders for a think tank meeting convened by the Black Men Teach Organization. A lot of different organizations coming together to support students and education, so that was just amazing. And as mentioned, this week is Homecoming Week. There are many fun events taking place. It's not only for football. There's also tennis and soccer and fun events at the high school, and the middle schools joining in as well. And since our last board meeting, I had communication with each of the board members, so thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Superintendent Stenbik. Next, we have our Association of School Business Officials Certificate of Excellence, presented by Superintendent Stenbik.
Yeah, I'm going to ask if Director Henneken's can come to the table. This is really wanting to highlight the work that the Finance Department has put in and does. And, yes, so the ASBO Award, so it's the Association of School Business Officials International. Columbia Heights Public Schools received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This award represents a significant achievement, and it represents our commitment to the highest standards of school system financial reporting. And this, this is an, not every school district has to go through this whole process, but we choose to do this additional work and submit additional financial reporting to this association for another check. And this is our fifteenth year in a row receiving this award. So just a huge congratulations to Director Henneken's and your team for putting all that work together. And if you have anything to add about the award, because you certainly know more about it than I do.
Uh, no, I mean, you covered it well. It is additional reporting. So it's, it's about, you know, additional transparency in the financial status of the district and, and what we do on a day-to-day basis in the Finance Department. So it does take a lot of extra work. It does make the audit go longer. But it's something that we've deemed very important in this district, and we continue to do.
Thank you. Director Henneken's, Superintendent Stenbik, I think for me, it is so important that we are fiscally responsible and transparent about our, our financial situation and how we're managing our, our dollars. And I think Member Hool, as our treasurer, has been really involved in that this year as well. I appreciate that. But I fully support this extra stuff, and I know, I, I know how stretched you are, and I know how many things are on your plate and your team. And I, but I value this and the extra work that you've done to put this forward so that we can help have information to provide to our community that we are doing what we say we're doing and that those records are, are available. So thank you for the extra time doing that. Any other questions or comments? Julie?
So does this, do they give you a report with recommendations in it, or?
So they, they will provide a letter after the award with any questions or changes for the next time around. So our auditors do ask for it. And if there is anything, last year there wasn't, the year before, there was a note. And, and we provide that to the auditors, and, you know, they look for the correction if there is. And so, yeah, so we do get some feedback from them. And historically, I don't believe, at least in my tenure, it hasn't been a lot. But it, our auditors do ask for it. So, yeah, it's something that we do pay attention to, and we will receive that.
And then just to kind of follow up on that, is this an award that can be beneficial to us for maybe borrowing money or our bond ratings or anything like that? Could you explain how that could possibly help that?
Sure. I mean, we recently, Superintendent Stenbik and I did have a conversation with Moody's about our credit rating, and, and this definitely was one of those things that we, we bring up. And it does provide them additional support for that. And obviously, we know that ratings matter when you're borrowing money, whether it's bonds or whether it's aid anticipation, which we've had to cash flow borrow. So yes, it, it definitely is meaningful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to you and your team. Mary?
I mean, I'll say it again. I say it all the time, but you and your team do such a great job. And I am, like it was said, you know, it's a lot of extra work. However, I appreciate that you and your team go so far to do that extra piece. And it's really great to see you validated and that work sort of validated through some of these other places. It's not just us. It's not just, you know, the sort of the regular people or whatever. So, yeah, thank you so much for your work with that. It's really appreciated. And, you know, definitely you are doing a lot of fantastic work.
Thank you.
Great. Julie?
I just want to reiterate what Lorian says. I appreciate this because it does show our community transparency and fiscal responsibility. And that's, you know, one of our, our jobs is to make sure that that is happening and you're, you're taking that on head-on. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you again. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next, we have Election Judge Report and Resolution. So this is an informational item tonight, so you do not get to hear me read the resolution tonight. But this will come back as an action item at our, at our next meeting. This is regarding the hiring of election judges. So Inoka County Office of Elections and Voter Registration hires the election judges for the special election that we have coming up on November 7th. And, and they coordinate the election judges and their training. And then the cost of the election judge salaries, all of the expense related to that is then passed back to the district as part of our cost for the special election. So we need to make the appointments for head election judge, assistant election judge, and election judge's assistant head judge no later than 25 days prior to the election. And that is done via resolution. So that is in your packet, and we will be voting on that at our next meeting. This is standard in terms of special elections. This is something that, that the county requires us to do for the election. Any questions? Did I miss anything? Any questions on that? Great, great. We'll see. I'll get to read that to you at our next meeting. Next, we'll move on to our action items. Our first action item is the insurance renewal. Director Henneken's.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. The first, I'm sorry, I'm a little disorganized. We were presenting to the Kiwanas earlier. I got back a little late. So the first item is the Property and Liability Insurance Renewal. This was discussed in detail at the previous school board meeting. This is a renewal for our property and liability insurance from October 1st through October 24th, or October 2024, I should say. And this is a, a pretty good increase for us this year. The market is showing high increases for property liability. And so our insurance property or liability insurance coverage through Liberty Mutual, total premium of $300,504. And then our Travelers, which is our cyber liability, for $25,212. The good note on that is our cyber liability was flat this year, so that was fantastic. So total package renewal before you is $325,716. So we're seeking approval for that this evening.
Great. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the renewal of the Property and Liability Insurance Coverage Package from Liberty Mutual and Travelers Insurance as presented?
So moved.
Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? I will just comment, we did have a very detailed presentation of this at our work session. I appreciate Steve McAlpin for putting this out to bid and trying to get the best rates available. I appreciate Steve McAlpin for putting this out to bid and trying to get the best rates available for us. And Director Hennekenz, correct me if I'm wrong, but a significant portion of our rate increase had to do with the property increase. So if your properties are valued higher, your insurance goes up as well. So that's directly related to the, you know, the property values as well as what is being seen in the industry in terms of insurance. But I was quite honestly, as happy as I could be with the renewal. We never want to see double-digit insurance renewals, especially as school finance, you know, school funding isn't increasing by double digits. But I appreciate the work that he did. So any other discussion?
I think it was also really interesting, I was prepared for our cyber liability to increase significantly again, especially with neighboring districts in Minneapolis who had some difficulties with their cyber, their online things. So I was really grateful for that and I think it also just shows that we're doing a lot of the work, doing a lot of extra work to make sure that our, our students and the data that we have here is safe. I was happy for that.
Thank you. And I, I think too, you know, we just need to continue to work with good partners like Steve McAlpin to continue to, to get the best pricing that we can for the coverage that we need. Because, you know, and if our, if our legislators, legislatures are listening, you know, this all has to be taken into consideration. Again, this is a double-digit increase from last year and we have to have insurance. And this was the best rate that was provided to us and several providers in the market were contacted. So that was my comment for those listening. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. And next, Director Hennekenz gets to repeat here. And we have our pay 2024 preliminary levy.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. So again, this evening, I have the 2023 payable 2024 preliminary levy. And it's mandatory that districts approve the preliminary levy prior to the end of September and so that the counties can send out the estimate taxes to property owners in timely fashion. And one thing of note that we do every year is that we approve the maximum on our preliminary levy. And as we work with our levy locally at the district level, the state's also working with the, the levy and the formulas for schools and making adjustments. So throughout this preliminary levy process, our levy fluctuates up and down. And by approving the maximum, then we can accept those fluctuations as they happen and maximize our levy as we move into the certification process. So this evening, requesting approval for our preliminary levy. I'm going to just kind of walk through that real quick though because it, let me just share my screen. And I'll try to do my best to zoom in here a little bit and just go through the, the key areas of the, of the levy and what we're certifying. Or when we're certifying them, we're not certifying, we're certifying the preliminary as maximum. So this is the, the general categories of levy itself. So the first one being the general fund or general operations. And so you can see what are certified. So in December, what the school board will do is certify the pay 24. So this was certified last December and what our levy was. And one of the key factors in this area is enrollment. And so one of the things that we know as a board here and, and hopefully many on the community know too, that our enrollment has been increasing. So this area here, we see increases really mainly due to that increase in enrollment. So we will see our preliminary levy higher because we have higher enrollment in our school district. So because that local optional, or that referendum number three, the only reason that changes, that's the $308.93 that we receive. The only reason that changes is due to enrollment, because that's a per people funded. So you can see that we'll see an increase there and of $766,375.17. That's in that general obligations and again, that's enrollment. The next section, you know, has some factor of, of enrollment, but really, you know, that's, it's a much smaller amount. So we have integration, that's our achievement integration. So this is the levy portion of it. We also receive state aid. And then we have our safe schools. And the safe schools is twice because, again, we've talked about it before, but we're a member of District 916, so that's an intermediate district where we send kids for services that we can do internally. And as that membership, that, the state legislature does not allow the intermediate district to levy themselves. They don't have a community to levy to because there's, districts are members of them. So the districts that are members levy. So that's where that comes into place. So not a ton of change there in that category. And then you see the general operating capital designated category. So long-term facility maintenance, operating capital. Big factors there are, are more the age of the buildings that you have. Enrollment does have a factor in there, so you do see increases there because of that enrollment increase. But it just doesn't affect it quite as much. Again, District 916 lease levy, we're members of them, they can't levy a community. So the member districts levy on their behalf. So not any major changes in that category. Then you see community education. One of the big notes in community education is there was a legislative change on how they fund that basic level. So the reason that basic level went down is because of that change. So now they provide some state aid. Used to be all levy, now there's some state aid provided. So that kind of fluctuated that category a little bit. And then prior year adjustments. So you see like that number six, school age care. You know, there's always prior, prior year adjustments that kind of affect that, that portion of it because we're levying a certain dollar amount in that category, we're guessing how much we're going to spend. And then we see the expenses and then there's an adjustment, just depending on how far off we are. So then that capital, Fund Six, Capital Projects Levy, so that's a voter-approved levy. And you can see that that is increasing quite a bit. Again, that, that increases based on the net tax capacity of the community. So as that net tax capacity goes up, then that number increases. If the net tax capacity, so the community gets poorer, then that number goes down. So we, it fluctuates based on that number. And so thankfully, it's going up. You know, thankfully, that means that the tax base in our community is getting wealthier. And so that's how that fluctuates. And then the debt service, so things that we have put out there in bonds and debt for, for the community. You know, one of the things that fell off recently in that category was 1996 bond referendum. So that fell off and that lowered our debt service. So not, not a significant change there. So the percent change currently, and again, please don't take this number to the bank, so to speak. It's not set in stone. This is just the preliminary levy. It will adjust. It's 13.1% increase. And again, that's, that's really driven by our student enrollment. There, that's what's driving that number. We saw two years of decreases, one because of student enrollment. And the other one was a little bit of student enrollment, but mostly because of that debt falling on. So we've seen two years of decreases and now we're seeing an increase. So that is the preliminary 2020 payable 2024 levy. And again, seeking to, to pass as maximum for this year. And again, I would note at the suggested motion, just the typo there. I did send an updated copy to Stephanie. It's to approve the 2023 payable 2024 preliminary school levy as maximum.
Thank you, Director Hennekenz. Well, do you have a motion in a second and then have discussion? Can I get a motion to approve the 2023 payable 2024 preliminary school levy as maximum?
Remove.
Michelle, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion?
I think just one thing, because when you aren't steeped in school finance, the big question is, why can't we just pull these things from the general fund? Why is this money not all pooled together for us to divvy out as we see fit? Can you share a little bit about, I mean, I, you don't have to go into too much detail. I know you have in the past, but I think now is a really good time just to sort of give a high-level overview about why it's not all in one bucket. There's many buckets?
I mean, I think that most in school finance or most in education understand that it's, it's, there's a lot of different funding streams that come into schools and they all have different rules associated with them. The legislature really sets those. So there's safety in schools initiatives, safe schools funding. You know, there's voter-approved referendum, you know, and how we receive that. And each one of those things come with different rules. So, and there's different formulas. Like I said, the community education levy, that's been pretty standard for a long time based on the census of the community. It's all levy. Now suddenly, in this last legislative session, they've made a change and now it's partially state aid and now suddenly it changes that. And along with that, you know, there's potential, you know, minute rule changes with that because our funding, every line item has a different kind of rule associated with it really. Our levy is, is 40 pages long, actually it's 39, but you know, it's almost 40 pages long.
We'll get full out.
So, so it's, there's a lot of formulas that go along with that. And it's not just to make it complicated, it's because, you know, different things have been added over time and then they just, again, they come with different rules, like achievement and integration. There's, there's a process for us to apply for achievement and integration and get approval for that. And again, it's part levy and part aid. And that, and then there's also these equalization factors based on the community. So if your community gets poorer, talked about net tax capacity, then you get more aid. If it gets richer, then there's more levy. So they can adjust based on that factor. So it's, it is very complicated. I'm sorry I didn't get as high as you wanted me to on that. But it's, it's, it just kind of shows that there's just a lot of different rules. So it isn't just one bucket.
Yeah, well, and again, I think this also shows why if we were to, you know, scroll back the tape here a little bit, why you got that award for your reporting, because this is very, very complex. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? I will just note for people who are listening, just to reiterate what Director Hennekenz said, a couple of points. One is that our levy did decrease the last two years. And so we are showing an increase this year, which is due largely to our increased enrollment. The other piece, and I want to thank Director Hennekenz for spending a lot of time at our work session going over this, especially with our new board members and making sure that we're all comfortable with this. The other part of this that some people might need to be more information on is why voting the maximum. And there are two options, correct me if I'm wrong, there are two options that we can either vote to approve the levy as a specific dollar amount or we can approve the maximum. And the reason why we are, it's proposed and why we are looking to, we have our motion on the floor to approve a maximum is because there are still changes that could happen between now and when the final levy is, is completed. If we approve a certain dollar amount, we cannot take advantage of any of those changes that may increase our, our funding. Whether it's formula errors or, you know, changes in the spreadsheets, whether it's enrollment, whatever is happening between now and then. So approving the maximum allows us to be able to capture anything that may be coming as all of the final preparations are being completed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other discussion? Michelle?
I think it's also important to note when we would be being paid, like the, the whole timeline of everything so that people know that this isn't coming in like now for this year.
Yeah, so it's, it's complicated in how it's titled, because it's the 2023 levy, payable 2024. But for us, it's fiscal year '25. So it really is, we're approving it now, the, as a preliminary, as, and so that we can submit that to the county and the state receives a copy of it so that the county can send out the estimates for taxes for next year. And, and so that's the process. And then they're going to start collecting those taxes in that 2024 year. But for us, we're actually receiving it in our fiscal year '25. So they like to make it a little bit complicated and, and, but that's how it kind of works. So, you know, it starts the process now because they got to get estimates out to people. You know, and then through this process of making changes and adjustments, you know, I talked about, a lot of the changes and adjustments that'll happen now are going to be aid and levy changes. And then they shouldn't be too major, they'll be minor tweaks, but it, it can affect our levy. And, and which is, in the past, has been very important for our, our community because in the past, it's been, we've been receiving more aid and less levy, which is, you know, a good thing and a bad thing. I mean, it's a good thing in the sense that it's less taxed to the community, but it's also, you know, it says what's happening in the community as well. So we, we definitely want to be able to take advantage of those things and, and, you know, an example of receiving more aid, because that's one of the major factors that we'll see. So it is a long drawn-out process, but it's, it's an important one and, and it's a very structured one.
Thanks. Thank you. Great questions. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Hennekenz. Next, we have board topics. Do we have any board topics? Julie?
I don't know if this is a board topic. I'm not sure what this goes into this topic. But when Director Thucral?
Thucral?
Was here, she talked about the curriculum approval. And she said that started in the fall. So I was curious as to when that was happening, because I know we get to look at the curriculum and I wanted to know what areas are being covered this year. So that, because I know it's on a rotation. And so I, I wanted to make sure that we get that. I want to understand that.
Curriculum cycle?
Yes.
In the packet perhaps?
Yeah, we'll put the curriculum cycle in, in the packet.
Okay.
So that we can get all that information out to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board topics? I will just say, I wish all of our students and staff a safe and happy homecoming and all of our former students. I hope we see many of them as well. It was great to see a lot of students out and about today, lots happening around. So I hope all of us and everybody listening have an opportunity to take in some of the homecoming festivities. So I hope our students have a great and safe time. Anything else? All right, hearing none, we will adjourn at 7:47.